Welcome to the September 28th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. I'm handling the prayer and the pledge tonight, so let me make sure. Okay, just making sure I didn't have a Boy Scout who was here to give the pledge tonight. So if you will, just bow your heads with me. Father, I thank you for this chance that we get to come together, the opportunity that we get to make decisions for the betterment of this city. Lord, I thank you for putting us in these positions. I ask for your guidance, I ask for your wisdom. Lord, with all the things that are happening in this country, we put it in your hands, especially for our service providers, for those that have been in danger and have been hurt through the floods and the hurricanes. We just ask you to be with them, to be with their families. Father, thank you for the blessings that you've given this city. We are thankful and we, Lord, thank you for what you're doing, in Jesus's name. Amen. All right, it's time, this, we haven't met for three weeks, so it's good to get back together, but I think we have our monthly history lesson. We have the county historian Greg Tucker who's here. Greg?
Thank you Mayor Shane. You know, of late, there's been quite a bit of interest in the future of the old Methodist Church building over on East College, and I thought we'd talk about one time long ago when there, that property was once again in confusion as to what would be its future. You know, the Methodist, they were then the Methodist Episcopal Church, part of the National Organization, in 1843 first moved onto that property and built their church. One year later, the National Organization split, split over the issue of slavery, this was in 1844, and created Methodist Episcopal Church North and the Methodist Episcopal Church South. Not surprising, our local congregation here in Murfreesboro was affiliated with the Methodist Episcopal Church South. A few years later, of course, the Civil War and the stress before the Civil War broke out, and a lot of people, particularly church people in the north, were of the opinion that the people in the pulpits in the southern churches had promoted secession. And when the Confederates began to organize in Rutherford County, they used that church as a military facility, cleared out the pews and such at that time. During the first occupation, the Union Army set up a hospital in the church. And after the Battle of Stones River coincided with an order that came down from Secretary of War Stanton, which said that the Methodist churches in particular had been disloyal, and that the properties of the Methodist churches south, including obviously here in Murfreesboro, would be seized and turned over to the equivalent Methodist Episcopal Church North. In 1863, the local congregation finally were given permission to resume holding services, and just as they were putting their church facility back in order, Reverend Patterson showed up with an armed guard and said, "The properties are now under the domain of the Church of the North." And literally, at gunpoint, moved out the local congregation and took over the facility, and proceeded to hold services. Most of his congregants at the time were part of the military, the occupying forces. The southern church, not to give up, made a special arrangement with what at the time was called the Camelite Church, and shared facilities with the Camelites during the period of occupation. In 1866, the war has ended, and of course, we were still here occupied, the occupying force during Reconstruction. And the local congregation, the southern church, again attempted to make use of what they said was their facility. The northern church said, "No, that was a permanent arrangement." So they submitted it to the commanding officer of the occupying force, a Union general. To the surprise of both sides, he gave the church back to the southern congregation. He may have read the Constitution, something about due process and the taking of property, but he gave it back to the southern congregation. The northern congregation, though, did not disappear. They moved into, and upstairs originally, on the square, and continued to hold services, eventually getting other properties. Over the next 20, 30 years, four decades, both churches grew. The southern congregation, the Church South, grew much more rapidly, but both churches survived and grew. In 1888, the Methodist Episcopal Church South built the facility that's there now. And if you go look at the cornerstone, they proudly boasted Methodist Episcopal Church South, still on the cornerstone over there. The northern congregation, though, over time, again began, continued to grow, as did the southern congregation. Finally, in 1938, the National Organization of the Methodist Church, and if you know the Methodist, they're highly organized, they decided to merge the north and the south churches. And once again, we had a united Methodist church. And the question that remains is, what became of the local northern church congregation? Because the difference in the names disappeared, and I can't help but wonder, which of our current congregations is the evolution of the northern congregation? I've always been a little suspicious of the St. Mark's bunch.[452.44][452.44](Laughter) I know that we, I think we still are deliberating on what's going to be the future of that property. I hope the property can be preserved, at least the facade and the tower. People say, "Well, it doesn't match anything." Yes, it does. It is, it copies the architecture of the courthouse up until 1908, when of course, they changed the look and appearance of the courthouse, but the church mimicked the courthouse style. Look forward to next month, we have a special observance next month, and I look forward to sharing it with you. Thank you.
Thank you Greg. It's funny you talk about, I think, October 15th, St. Paul's Episcopal Church, they're celebrating their 125-year anniversary. So lots of, lots of anniversaries. Thank you again for coming. We have one more ceremonial item, not really ceremonial, but more of an announcement. We're proud, Ms. Jennifer Moody was awarded an Emerging Leader Award nominee presented to Jennifer from the Murfreesboro Young Professionals. So congratulations, and I'll hang this on the wall in my office, I appreciate that.[535.82][535.82](Laughter) And last but not least, I'm not going to give him the opportunity to come up and do a PowerPoint, but I think the Water and Sewer Department has changed their name. And now, we are officially the Water Resources Department, and that became effective September 1st, is that correct? Or July, was it July 1st? July 1st. So we have officially changed our name, and that is on the record.
Rose by any other name is still wrong.
That's right.[573.16][573.16](Laughter) So I think, since we've, this is the second department that I can remember that we've changed names, because it wasn't too long ago, we changed Murfreesboro Fire Department to Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue, and now we are the Water Resources Department.
Personnel to Human Resources.
All right. All right, we have the consent agenda in front of you. Is there, are there any questions on the consent agenda?
If there are no questions or comments, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
You have two sets of minutes, the August 31st, 2017 special meeting, which is the City Manager Performance Evaluation, and then you have the August 31st, 2017 regular meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. First readings, we have a letter from the Assistant Planning Director regarding Ordinance 17OZ 33, Mr. Blomley.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, and members of council. You recall, back on July 20th, we conducted a public hearing for the property located on both the east and west sides of Veterans Parkway, just north of the state route, or it's now the I-840 interchange. Gets used to, gotta get used to saying that. Property was requested to be rezoned from RS 15 to CH Commercial Highway. It is directly adjacent to the West Park property. Council at that time, at the time of the public hearing, was concerned about some of the uses that are allowed by right and by special use permit in the commercial highway zone, especially with regard to the proximity of the proposed West Park, right next door to the subject property. So the council deferred action and suggested that the applicant work on some restrictive covenants, so that they could show in good faith what they intended to restrict from the property, what uses that would ordinarily be permitted in the commercial highway zone they intended to restrict. And what I have provided for you is a draft copy of restrictive covenants for your review, and they intend to have these recorded before second reading if you vote to approve the rezoning request tonight. As you can see on pages one and two of the restrictive covenants, and these are included in your agenda materials, there are about 35 uses that they have, that they're looking to prohibit from the subject property. After the city council public hearing, about a week or two after that, I sat down with the applicants, and we just combed through the zoning ordinance in the CH zoning district to see what was permitted and what might be objectionable, and they, and they came up with this list after that meeting. So those restrictive covenants have been provided for you. The applicants will make sure they're recorded if first reading passes tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and several representatives of the applicants are here tonight, if you have any questions for them.
Could you give us a brief kind of synopsis of what restrictive covenants are and what strengths they put on?
Sure. Be glad to. The restrictive covenants are not ordinance. They're, it's a private document, private restrictions that run with the property and are enforced by the property owners, essentially through the court system if someone refuses to comply with the covenants. Now, the list of uses that are prohibited, as I mentioned, there are about 35 of them. Those 35 uses are something that we, as the city planning department, cannot say, by ordinance, you can't do that, because the ordinance may permit most or all of these uses. But what we can do is remind them that the restrictive covenants may prohibit certain uses, and that if somehow someone wanted to try to move forward with one of these uses, but a violation of the covenants could lead the other property owners to take the violating property owner to court. And the way that they have written the covenants, it's automatically renewing unless, what it says is, "This declaration of restrictive covenants shall be construed as covenants running with the land, and shall be binding upon and inure to the benefit of the parties heretofore their grantees, successors and assigns for 20 years from the date hereof. At the expiration of said term, they shall be automatically renewed for an additional period of 20 years, unless canceled by the unanimous vote of all the parties then owning the entire land area of the property." So 20 years from now, when they expire, it would take an act of every property owner, presumably after 20 years, it will be, will have been divided up into numerous parcels. All property owners would have to agree to cancel the restrictive covenants. So while they're not enforceable by the city, all property owners are made aware of them, and the other property owners that are bound by the covenants would be responsible for
Did you read part B? Just. On the agenda. Did you read part B? On the agenda.
We need to have a motion for the, for the, I'm sorry, yeah. Consider for passage on first reading, Ordinance 17OZ 33 to rezonate an area along Veterans Parkway and Vaughn Road to Highway Commercial, CH District. Thank you, Councilwoman Smotherman.
So move.
Second.
Motion, a second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Under new business, we have pursuant to Resolution 17RPH 40 adopted by the city council on August 17, 2017, will conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to rezone approximately 21.93 acres along Joby Jackson Parkway and Manchester Pike from Commercial Highway, CH District to Planned Residential Development, PRD District, Joby Jackson PRD. Richard South LLC applicant, notice of set public hearing was published in the September 11, 2017 issue of the local newspaper.
Joe. Good evening, I'm Donald Anthony with the Murfreesboro Planning Department. At its August 2nd meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed a rezoning request from Richland South LLC for a 21.93 acre property located near the northwest corner of Manchester Pike and Joby Jackson Parkway. The property is currently zoned CH, and the applicant wishes to rezone to PRD to allow a 199-unit, single-family attached residential development. Gross density for the project would be 9.1 units per acre. The proposed development would have driveway connections on both Manchester Pike and Joby Jackson. Other than the driveways themselves, this development would not include any of the frontage on either of those roads. The remaining frontage would retain CH zoning, and would be available for future commercial use. Murfreesboro 2035 shows this area as appropriate for general commercial. Preserving the frontage for future commercial would appear to be consistent with the 2035 plan. Surrounding zoning includes CH to the west, PRD and CH to the north, PUD to the east, and county RM or medium-density residential to the south. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to send this forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation. Rob Mulchan from SEC is here to talk more about this request, and staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, Mayor, Father, and members of the City Council. Rob Mulchan, SEC, here tonight, I want to give you a brief overview of Joby Jackson As Mr. Anthony alluded to, the property is located in the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Joby Jackson Parkway and Manchester Pike. The property is currently zoned CH with a mixture of different uses surrounding it, you have residential and PRDs to the west and north, to the northeast and to the south, you have properties still lying within the county, which are zoned medium-density residential. To the east, you have a very large PUD development that has not been undertaken at this point in time. And off to the southwest, you have a planned industrial district as well, along Joby Jackson. Next couple slides, just to give you a little overview of what the property looks like currently. This is a view looking into the site from Manchester Pike at where the proposed entrance would be to the residential portion of the development. This is a view looking back out from the residential area, back out towards Manchester Pike. This is a view looking from Joby Jackson, this is towards the southwest corner of the property, looking back in towards the property from Joby Jackson Parkway. This is a view along the frontage of Joby Jackson where the property will be accessed. The plan itself, requesting planned residential district for 199 attached, single-family townhomes, you're looking at a density of about 9.1 units per acre. With this project, you'll be getting over eight acres of open space included. All the streets in the development will be private, and they will have sidewalks on both sides of the streets for creating a very walkable community. And all the utilities will be underground. Before the meeting, I did send, hand out a supplemental draft of the actual concept plan. Today, we were, had some discussions with staff in regards to a couple of things we wanted to address. On the plan itself, we have incorporated a cabana and pool, have a large green space, that's larger than just green space in the property, so incorporating a cabana and pool to go along with the playground and lawn area that we already had incorporated in the plan itself. Also, along with the plan, we've also incorporated through discussions about trash, we had a compactor in the southwest corner of the property, just the north of the commercial next to the church, and we've added a supplemental secondary compactor space as you access the site off of Manchester Pike, so the entrance drive coming off Manchester Pike behind that commercial pod there, next to the detention before the first sets of units, we have another trash compactor site on there. So those are some of the concerns staff had that we addressed today, bring forth for you tonight to review on that side.
Rob, Mr. Mulchan.
Yes, sir.
If you'll relieve that, can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
Will you back up to that last slide?
Yep.
Yep. I don't know where the words went, but I think it said eight acres of green space.
Correct.
Does that include, yeah, does that, so almost nine acres of green space? I assume that includes the tension ponds?
That includes, yeah, that's all the, that's all the green space incorporated within the development itself.
The yards inside, I mean even like the yards in between the?
Correct, that's all green, yeah. Open spaces, calculation involved, the green space associated with the property, that wouldn't be necessarily building roadway or parking lot, or driveways and such like that. So it's all the green spaces associated with the property.
All right. I'm just kind of curious, what's the actual building envelope for the, you know, we say you've got 200 units on 21 acres, but what are we actually building on? I'm just kind of curious, you know?
I don't have that number off the top of my head or written down to give you that acreage we can definitely, you know, forward that to you.
It'd be, the total land area is 21.93 acres.
Correct.
And total number of units, that's on 9.07 acres, so that'd be what you're?
Yeah, I'm just curious, does the 21 acres include the commercial?
No, the commercial portion, this is just solely, what the request that's before you tonight is solely just for the acreage for the residential, the four commercial lots are being left as is, as they are today with CH zoning still attached to them. So more or less, this rezoning is more or less subdividing this property into five parcelages, four of which will remain as the existing current CH zoning, and then the larger tract being the 21 acres being rezoned for the residential portion. So tonight, we're just representing the outlying parcels as just being left the way they are, and the internal is the residential side of things. Moving forward, talk a little bit about the buildings themselves, the townhomes will be two-story buildings, you'll be looking at a minimum 1,300 square feet per unit, and there's going to be different types and different unit sizes within these, within the townhomes themselves. Minimum two bedrooms with three bedrooms incorporated as well. These will be a front-loaded garage product, as you can see in the diagram at the bottom of the page, these are, the internal units, the middle units are actually one-car garage units, the externals, the end units are actually two-car garages. Each lot will provide at least two parking spaces, so on the individual units that have a single-car garage, you'll have a single space inside the garage, a single space in the driveway. On the end units, you have two garage spaces and two driveway spaces. And the garages will be set forth as restricted for vehicular use only through the restricted covenants and governed by the HOA. These will also be sold under horizontal property regime, so maintenance will be maintained by the HOA for all the exteriors of the buildings and facilities and the lands around the properties. Building materials, on the front side of the units will be primarily masonry-type units, they will be brick, stone, cement fiber boards, with vinyl only permitted trim soffit and dormer areas, and these will have decorative garage doors with windows and characteristics to make them more attractive. On the sides of these units, I think the interesting character of these units is that the sides of the townhomes themselves is actually the front door for the end units. So as you, as you can see, the sides of these actually have a porch that wraps around the side of the unit, and the actual garage, the actual front door for the unit is actually on the side of the unit, so it's going to create a very unique, you know, unique character to the townhome, the area on this side. Again, the elevations in this will be primarily masonry materials, brick and stone on the first story, and then cementation fiber board on the top, with vinyl, again, only permitted in the trim soffit and dormer areas. The rear elevations, we also did a little, little discussion with staff in the past day or so in regards to the vinyl siding that we've had listed on this, for the, you know, since the beginning of this. We've gone back and removed the vinyl siding altogether from the rears of these elevations, so the entire building will be a masonry product, whether it be brick, stone, or hardy or cement sided board all the way around, so no vinyl siding incorporated with this. So that is the change since the public hearing at the Planning Commission. So, so on the first story, you're going to have brick and stone and cementation fiber board, the second story, you'll have solely a cementation fiber board, and then vinyl will be limited to, again, only the trim soffit and dormer areas of the buildings themselves. Amenities, as I alluded to, we've got, we'll have a masonry-type signage with landscaping at both the entrances off of Joby Jackson and Manchester Pike. And again, getting back to the original plan, having a pavilion and tot lot, more or less, we've now, again, with the amendment in front of you tonight, we've added the, incorporating a cabana with pool, keeping the tot lot and the large lawn space as part of that park structure there. Coming back, we also got a dog park and one of the other open spaces that we have around the property. We'll also have a centrally-located mail kiosk, so all mail delivery will be done through a mail kiosk system. Regards to access, we do have, like I said, two locations, one will be at Joby Jackson. Here, you're going to have a three-lane cross-section on this private driveway leading back to the residential. The three-lane cross-section will stretch the entire length of the commercial lots that are being preserved on either side of this accessway, so you have three lanes of stacking, three lanes of travel and stacking all the way across the distance of these commercial lots, and then tapering back down to a two-lane cross-section going back into the townhome portion of the development. These two commercial lots on either side will have direct access to the private driveway for access back to Joby Jackson, and it is anticipated that the commercial lots will also have direct access to Joby Jackson, either through a right-in, right-out only situation, or a true intersection with Joby Jackson. The other intersection with Manchester Pike will be the same kind of configuration as Joby Jackson, again, a three-lane cross-section that stretches the entire length of the commercial lots. And again, the commercial lots on this side will also have direct access to this private driveway for connectivity back to the residential and back to Manchester Pike, and again, the two lots will have some kind of direct access onto Manchester Pike. With that, I'm available for any questions now or after the public hearing, and I appreciate your time and consideration of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Mulchan. We'll need to conduct a public hearing for this amendment to rezone approximately 21.93 acres for the change on the PRD. Before you come up to speak, we have a few rules on our public hearings. If you're representing a group, you'll have five minutes; if you represent an individual, you'll have three. If you'll, when you come to the podium, if you'll state your name and address, that way we have that for the record, and then if you'll keep all your questions or comments to the city council after the public hearing is over with, if there's any questions, we'll get those answered at that time by staff. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading, Ordinance 17OZ 40 to rezonate an area along Joby Jackson Parkway and Manchester Pike to Planned Residential Development, PRD Motion, a second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Pursuant to Resolution seventeen RPH forty-one adopted by the city council on August seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, will conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to rezone approximately twenty-one point, twenty-four point one five acres along Shelbyville Pike and Joby Jackson Parkway from planned commercial development, PCD District, to planned unit development, PUD District, Marketplace at Savannah Ridge, PUD. Carl Story is the applicant in two thousand and seventeen dash four twenty-five. Notice that said public hearing was published in September eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Uh, at the August second Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed a zoning application from Carl Story for a twenty-four acre property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Highway two thirty-one and Joby Jackson Parkway. This property was zoned PCD in two thousand and six and included entitlements for approximately two hundred thousand square feet of commercial floor area. The applicant wishes to rezone to PUD to allow a mixed-use development that would include four major components. First, a multi-tenant commercial structure. Second, eight, uh, commercial out parcels. Third, four single-family residential lots. And fourth, thirty single-family attached dwelling units or townhouses. The site would be accessible from Highway two thirty-one, Joby Jackson Parkway, and Hyannis Drive. Murfreesboro twenty thirty-five shows this area as appropriate for general commercial, and this request appears to be consistent, uh, with twenty thirty-five, uh, with the caveat that there are, again, townhomes, uh, that could serve as something of a buffer between the Savannah Ridge, uh, development and the, the commercial property. Surrounding zoning includes RZ and County RM to the west, PCD and RS ten to the north, RS eight and RS fifteen to the east, and PCD to the south. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to send this forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation. Uh, David Baker with Baker Story McDonald is here, as well as several members of his design team, uh, to speak more about this project. Staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is David Baker. I'm with Baker Story McDonald Property. As mentioned, this property was, um, zoned back in two thousand and six for a single anchored big tenant that has a big red circle, um, along with some powers, um, power boxes that was going with that. Times changed, and we sat back. We realize now that it's time to develop a smaller, more neighborhood, uh, mixed-use development. So, um, our plan is to do a, um, a, let's see, this guy, there we go, let me go back one. So this is an aerial rendering of the project to show its location and orientation to Shelbyville Road at Joby Jackson. The white buildings are residential. There we go, that one? Back one, sorry, guys. I'm pinch hitting for my partner Carl Story, who happens to be, um, traveling this week, so I'm, I'm covering for him. The white buildings are, um, are phase two of this and the residential components, and we'll discuss that in the, in the next slide. This is a master plan of the, um, entire fill, build-out of the, of the, of the project. The main difference between what we're previously approved and what we're doing now are that the townhomes along Wycheck Lane are, are, are there, and we're keeping the single-family lots along Titan Circle to act as a buffer for commercial components of the development. We're proposing seven outlets for restaurant, retail, and self-storage. Again, this will be very directed towards neighborhood uses as opposed to regional uses. The anchor tenant in the corner of the strip center will most likely be a grocery store. Stormwater management ponds are designed to over-detain runoff and alleviate flooding downstream of the development per the city engineer's department's request. We had a traffic impact study done, submitted to the traffic engineering department. The road improvements that are recommended in the traffic impact study and the city traffic engineer will be fully built out in the first phase of our development. The landscape buffers along the residential streets and property lines will further screen the site from existing Savannah Ridge residents, and will be installed during the first phase of the development, and we've actually enhanced the landscaping based on our neighborhood meetings. This is our phased plan. The blue is our phase one, roughly a hundred and thirty thousand square feet of commercial. The green is the residential phase, and the pink is our phase two of another fifty-seven thousand square feet of retail. The amenity space located at the corner of Wycheck Lane and Titan Circle will be built in the phase one for use by all the residents in Savannah Ridge. The elevations of the strip center will meet the city architectural design requirements. The elevations of the outlet will also meet the city architectural design requirements and go along with the same theme of the rest of the shopping center. And this last slide is renderings of what the current residents will see when the site is fully constructed. It portrays the buffer of the townhomes and single families that will provide screening and, uh, screening from the landscaping that will provide to the residents that are there. And that's all I have.
All right, any questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right, we will now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
My name is Tonya Allen, and I live at thirty-four sixteen Shelbyville Highway, right across from the development and second house down from the proposed Highfield Drive two thirty-one access. Um, up front, I just wanna say that I like how the developers have worked with the community, um, to design the properties, buildings, and the lay, I like the, the layouts, it gives it a nice variety. The only issue that I have is what's within the city's control, and that is the proposed intersection that is gonna be at the two thirty-one and directly across from Highfield intersection. Um, that was, issue was addressed at the neighborhood meeting and the planning meeting, and I'm addressing that now. Um, I'm asking the city to please make the determination for a light at this intersection, 'cause right now it is proposed left-in, left-out only, um, due to the following issues. This is a speed zone. It goes from forty-five to fifty-five to sixty-five and reverse in the northbound lane. As soon as the light from the Savannah Ridge changes, it is literally off to the races. And many vehicles have and do blow through Joby Jackson's light when it turns red, including eighteen-wheelers. Um, second, when the traffic light backs up or people don't wanna wait to get into the Savannah Ridge light, they come down to the Highfield intersection to make a U-turn to either access the subdivision or Camino Real. Um, the, my subdivision is the Palmer Acres subdivision, and residents right now are having a difficult time even getting out from the subdivision due to the, uh, traffic. I believe it's in the upper twenty-nine thousand per daily. And it is, with this proposal, I believe it's a potential dangerous mess, um, due to the fact that it's human nature to take the shortest, most direct route, even though it may not be the safest route, which is proposed right now for the side entrances for Highfield, I mean, I'm sorry, for Savannah Ridge and Joby Jackson access. Um, currently, right now, my neighbors, my clients, because I run a home-based business, um, and my household, we, if we come from the Walmart direction, we have to make a U-turn also to access our properties. Um, and with all the extra traffic now to Walmart, it, it is very congested through there. Since we have been there in, it has been usually quiet, but last, within the last year, year and a half, there have been four lifelike helicopters that have landed at the Joby Jackson intersection. Um, and it has, during the fifteenth, this has not happened before. So I'm asking you to please make the determination for a light with a, with a trip sensor for this intersection. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Allen. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and consider for passage on first reading ordinance seventeen OZ forty-one to rezone an area along Shelbyville Pike and Joby Jackson Parkway to planned unit development, PUD District, Marketplace at Savannah Ridge, PUD. Of our staff, we have one question regarding an intersection or traffic light.
I, I've spoken with the, uh, traffic engineer about that previously. It, it is a state highway, and so in order to install a light, you have to meet certain warrants. Um, and my understanding is that, that this project as proposed at this point does not rise to that level. Um, that doesn't mean that it won't at some point in the future, um, but that's the, that's the discussion that I had with, with Mr. Belachandra.
Is it possible by second reading that, that we could have a more definitive, um, maybe the distance between Savannah Ridge intersection and this intersection, and then if there is a, a warrant at some point?
Definitely. I, I can get, get you that information.
All right, any other questions?
With it being a state route, all we could really do is just make a request anyways. I don't think we could install a light there. So I don't, I, I don't think it's the city's ability to do anything other than make a suggestion to the state.
Ms. Allen, we have the public hearings already. Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, still.
No, ma'am, it's, yeah, it's still closed.
I was going to respond to that question, but...
That's okay, thank you.
I'm so sorry.
That's all right. All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I, I like the mayor would like to have a more definitive, uh, explanation of that in, uh, second reading, and, uh, on first reading, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion a second for first reading approval, with the stipulation that we'll have some more information at second reading on the traffic light.
Sir.
Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance. Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution seventeen RPH forty-two adopted by the city council on August, August seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, will conduct a public hearing to consider adoption of a plan of services for an annexation of approximately nine point six five acres and to rezone approximately three point nine acres along Osborne Lane as single-family residential ten RS ten district simultaneous with annexation, and to zone approximately point one five acres along Osborne Lane as planned residential development PRD District simultaneous with annexation, and to rezone approximately twelve point six acres along Osborne Lane from single-family residential twelve RS twelve district to single-family residential ten RS ten district, Vaughn and Geraldine Powers and Green Trails LLC, and Randy Friesman, applicants two thousand and seventeen dash five oh two and two thousand and seventeen dash four twenty-one. Notice that said public hearing was published in the September eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Baumley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. The first of the, uh, public hearings with regards to this property is regarding the annexation plan of services and annexation petition. Property's located on the north side of Osborne Lane, uh, it's the Powers property, there's one single-family home on it. We have a companion zoning request, as you alluded to in the introduction, um, but the request has been made for annexation, kind of a companion annexation request that staff added on. You'll notice that there, the area is pointing to this right here as well, the area textbox, that's one of our, um, ten-foot strips. So back when the Valleybrook subdivision tract was annexed back in two thousand and fifteen, um, we did not have an annexation petition for the subject property, so we had to leave a ten-foot strip here, uh, in order to keep the subject property that is now being annexed from being completely surrounded by the city limits. So, uh, we took the opportunity to try to clean up a ten-foot strip and added that into the annexation plan of services. The annexation plan of services that you have before you, uh, does show that the city will be able to provide services to the subject property. It's, as you can tell, for all intents and purposes, with the exception of a ten-foot strip, is surrounded by the city limits, um, and it fronts on Osborne Lane, which is a city street that was reconstructed by the city about ten or twelve years ago. Uh, the property is within the city's urban growth boundary, and we can affect this annexation relatively easily. I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding the annexation, and just for the city council's benefit and for the benefit of the, the audience here tonight, the first public hearing will be with regards to the annexation plan of services and annexation petition only. Um, the zoning will be a separate presentation and a separate public hearing. And we did have some input on the zoning during the planning commission public hearing, but, uh, not so much on the annexation itself. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the planning commission did unanimously recommend the annexation of the subject property.
Thank you, Mr. Baumley. Okay, we'll now need to conduct a public hearing on the plan of services and the annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the plan of services and the annexation, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider for adoption Resolution seventeen RPS forty-two to adopt a plan of services for approximately nine point six five acres along Osborne Lane, Vaughn and Geraldine Powers and Green Trails LLC are the applicants.
Move for, second.
Councilman Wade, Councilman LaLance. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
I'm sorry, Councilman, uh, Smotherman.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Well, now need to consider for adoption Resolution seventeen RA forty-two to annex approximately nine point six five acres along Osborne Lane, and to incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Vaughn and Geraldine Powers and Green Trails LLC, applicants two thousand and seventeen dash five oh two.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion a second, Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. Baumley.
Thank you once again, Mayor McFarland. This is a companion zoning request for the same property. There's actually three components to this zoning request. So the subject property that we just annexed is this property here, the southern portion of it is in purple, and the northern portion of it is the hatched orange area. The purple area, there's no zoning request for the purple area, it's, and it'd be given an interim RS fifteen zoning classification upon annexation. Now, the back three point nine acres, the hatched orange area, is, has been requested to be zoned RS ten simultaneous with annexation, and the orange area, unhatched orange area, which is currently zoned RS twelve, has been requested to be zoned RS ten as well. The total area requested to be zoned RS ten is sixteen point five acres. The third component of the request is for said ten-foot strip. We are proposing to zone that PRD simultaneous with annexation, and PRD is the same zoning classification as Valleybrook, so it would essentially become part of the Valleybrook PRD to clean up that, that ten-foot strip that was left in the county back in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, as I mentioned, the subject property, uh, the larger tract adjacent to the Ridgeport subdivision is zoned RS twelve. That was zoned RS twelve, I believe, in, um, two thousand and sixteen, it was annexed and zoned RS twelve, and that RS twelve zone is the same zoning classification as the Ridgeport subdivision, as well as the Hampton subdivision across Osborne Lane. The, uh, RS ten zoning classification would, um, decrease the minimum lot size from twelve thousand square feet to ten thousand square feet. Uh, the yield for the sixteen point five acres would go up, uh, I would estimate, um, from forty-five, approximately forty-five lots, and that's just a rough ballpark, to between fifty and fifty-five lots. We've received a, a preliminary plat for the subject property, um, and the preliminary plat shows a yield of fifty-two lots, so generally an increase of about seven lots, um, over what may have been permitted, where all the property's zoned, um, RS twelve. The Murfreesboro twenty thirty-five plan, you see it's, the property's right here, recommends that the property develop as suburban residential, and the suburban residential is the equivalent of the city zoning districts of RS ten, RS twelve, and RS fifteen. So the request to have the property zoned RS ten is consistent with the, uh, Murfreesboro twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan, which was adopted by the Planning Commission earlier this year. The, uh, Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on, uh, August the The planning commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on August the second. By a vote of five to one, the planning commission recommended approval of this zoning request. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. One thing that I did want to mention is right before the meeting, Mr. Freedsum, who's the applicant and the developer, handed me some draft restrictive covenants that he wished to have the city council made aware of. There are some restrictions on the use of the property, as well as the materials of the houses, the heated square footage, et cetera, et cetera. And once again, that's just a good faith effort by the applicant to show what his intentions are, and it's nothing that would be binding from a city standpoint. The applicant did conduct a neighborhood meeting on August the twenty-second at Wilson Bank at the corner of Memorial and Osborne. It's well-attended. I'd say we probably had about twenty neighboring residents there, and there was some good dialogue. Be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Roundtree from Huddleston Steel is here, as well as Mr. Freedsum, if you have any questions for them.
I have a question, Mr. Blomley. The area that's coming in is RS fifteen. Is that not, that's not going to be part of the development plans?
That's correct. The current owners of that property, that's where their house is. They actually have two houses on that property. I believe they wish to continue living there, and they're only planning on selling the back three point nine acres to Mr. Freedsum. So their two houses on that subject property would continue to exist, and they would just come into the city limits and be within our jurisdiction. No development plans for that front portion.
Is Mr. Roundtree wanting to speak, or are we going to go ahead and have the public hearing?
I don't believe he has a formal presentation, but they're available to answer any questions.
Okay. All right. Okay, we'll open the public hearing for this zoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
My name's Adam McCartney. I'm a resident of seven five seven Bud Court, and I am living in the property of Ridgeport, right adjacent to the property that's being annexed and rezoned. I'm going to speak on behalf of the Ridgeport neighborhood as a part of doing a survey for them, as Freedsum and Mr. Freedsum and I were connecting when we did the neighborhood meeting, trying to create a survey for our neighborhood and find out what our neighbors would like to have in the evaluation, and see if we can get Mr. Freedsum to work with us. He has done very well with working with us since that neighborhood meeting. As a survey, I do have a copy if anybody wants to see it, but as a whole, there was thirty-three properties in our neighborhood. Sixteen of them responded with very generous comments and other sections apart. As a part of that, thirteen of them have asked for a minimum square footage of twenty-one hundred square feet, and as well as one hundred percent, I'm sorry, one hundred percent masonry as well. So those are the two things that we were asking. Particularly, we did have a large response as well on the two-car decorative garages. But for what we're trying to do is we're just trying to maintain our property values in the area, and as a part of the council approving this, just ask that you also connect with that and keep with our property values in that area. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance seventeen OZ forty-two to zone an area along Osborne Lane, the single-family residential ten RS ten district, and planned residential development PRD district simultaneous with annexation, and rezone an area along Osborne Lane, the single-family residential ten RS ten district. The question we had was regarding the square footage and the brick requirement, and it looks like in these restrictions that...
Seven and eight cover.
Yeah, number seven and eight cover masonry products and square footage that we have. It's twenty-one hundred square feet, it's twenty-one hundred square feet of heated living area in addition to attached garage opening, and then also number seven is all homes shall be constructed of masonry products with the exception of overhang or the soffit. Of course, these are restrictions, so it's up to the developer to record those, but I think it shows that they're working in good faith. All right, any more, any other questions?
I will say I was very, very pleased with the attendance from the neighborhood at the neighborhood meeting, and I don't think I've ever been to a neighborhood meeting where there was more consideration and cooperation between the developers and the neighbors themselves in order to try and not only maintain your property value, but to allow them to develop a very, what appears to be a very nice neighborhood. I've got one question. On item two, there shall be no chicken or hog operations allowed in subject property. By code, you're allowed, what, six chickens, hens, but no roosters? Is that right?
That's right.
Would this supersede the chicken code?
The restrictions would.
Director?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Whitaker, if you go into the Chicken Man that lived out on, I think it was at Brinkley Road.
Old Champy.
Yeah.
Old Champy.
There's a whole lot of question right there. You'll have to ask our legal counsel whether the restrictive covenants would supersede. But in my previous life, I was a building code director, and you can have chickens, roosters are allowed if you have, I believe it is, five acres or more. Less than five acres, it does limit you to, I think, six chickens. I think you are correct.
But Mr. Whitaker, even though we have an ordinance that stipulates that someone could do something, if the restrictive covenants in a subdivision mandate that they can't do that, then those restrictive covenants for the subdivision would supersede our ordinance?
Well, they could and would, but they would not be enforced by cities.
Right.
They would have to be enforced.
The HOA would enforce that.
Is that correct, Mr. Ives?
It is.
And the reason to say that for residents, a lot of times, a lot of times, a third-party homeowners association will be much more restrictive in a subdivision than the city Thank you, Mr. Whitaker.
Yes, sir.
That's enough chicken talk. I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval sans chickens.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution seventeen RPH forty-three adopted by the City Council on August seventeen, two thousand seventeen, will conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to rezone approximately seven acres along Manson Pike from single-family residential fifteen RS fifteen district to commercial fringe CF district. Chad Meadow is the applicant, two thousand seventeen dash four twenty-two. Notice of said public hearing was published in the September eleventh, two thousand seventeen issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Subject property is located on the south side of Manson Pike. It's this area here, and the map's a little bit confusing, so I apologize for that, but it is this area. And the reason why we've included this right-of-way of eight forty is because, per the zoning ordinance, the adjacent right-of-way, for mapping purposes, gets a zoning classification. So for what that's worth, that's why that right-of-way is also included. But it's just, really, the subject is just the seven acres along Manson Pike. It's the, it's property that was previously owned by Blackman United Methodist Church and recently sold to the Meadow family. Mr. Meadow owns the property directly to the west of the subject property, and you'll see the areas owned CF and CH directly to the west. This map doesn't clearly show the entire length or the entire perimeter of that property, but it has a very, very small amount of road frontage on Blackman Road and really no frontage on Manson Pike. The frontage that it does have on Manson Pike is bordered by the bridge that goes over eight forty, so it really is afforded no access to Manson Pike and only a very, very, very small area on Blackman Road that it can have vehicular access to. So what the applicant is doing is, since he purchased the property, which is currently occupied by a church, and he's going to continue to rent out the property to the church until such time as it redevelops, he has requested rezoning of the property from RS fifteen to CF to match the adjacent commercial zoning to the west. And the, under the CF zone, the existing church would be a legal use, it would be a conforming use. What he's really looking to do is, if he sells the property to the west, he wants to be able to market it with some additional access opportunities, and this would allow the property to have access onto Manson Pike. So I think it's his idea to package the properties together, both the larger tract, the larger fifty-three acre tract on Blackman Road with this seven-acre tract on Manson Pike where the church is located. As I mentioned, the property directly to the west is already zoned, commercial fringe and commercial highway, so this zoning would be consistent with the existing zoning for that property. It's directly to the north of the Blackman Meadows subdivision, which is zoned RS twelve, and we actually have a pending rezoning application for RS six for what is directly to the south of the subject property. To the east of the subject property is the Mattington Park, which I believe is now called Braxton Park Townhome Development. So this is property that's zoned for single-family purposes, and it's kind of sandwiched in between commercial property and property that was zoned for townhomes, and so its utility for single-family development is probably somewhat limited, especially with it fronting on Manson Pike. And so the applicants have requested to rezone it to commercial fringe, as I mentioned, to be packaged with the property to the west. The twenty thirty-five future land use map actually calls for the property to be developed as suburban residential, but for the reasons that I mentioned before, with its proximity with the commercial zone property to the west and the townhome zone property to the east, this may be an appropriate property if the council so chooses to deviate from the future land use map in the twenty thirty-five plan. The suburban residential zone would be RS ten, RS twelve, and RS fifteen type zoning classifications. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on August the second and voted unanimously to recommend approval of this zoning request. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I believe that Mr. Roundtree is here. He'll be able to answer any questions on behalf of his client.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing for the rezoning from this property from RS fifteen to commercial fringe. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will consider for passage on first reading ordinance seventeen OZ forty-three to rezone an area along Manson Pike to commercial fringe CF district.
Yeah, I think, I'm going to second the motion, but I do think that with us putting the park out there, it has changed the environment out here significantly of what this property should be zoned as, and I think that's probably where we need to go back and maybe have the people who did the review of what they suggested the property usage as to reconsider because of the proximity of our park and stuff. I think it's kind of changed the nature of some of these intersections, so I second the motion.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution seventeen RPH forty-four adopted by the City Council on August seventeen, two thousand and seventeen, will conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to approximately seventy-four acres in the planned residential development PRD district, Kimbrough Woods PRD, and to rezone approximately eight point nine one along acres along Veterans Parkway from single-family residential fifteen RS fifteen district to planned residential development PRD district, Kimbrough Woods the PRD, Kimbrough Development Group LLC. The applicant notices said public hearing was published in the September first eleven, two thousand and seventeen issue of the local newspaper.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. The subject property is what's known as the Kimbrough Woods subdivision. Back when the stretch of St. Andrews Drive was actually known as Kimbrough Road, this was named Kimbrough Woods, I guess back around two thousand and eight, the street name was changed to St. Andrews Drive. The subject development is still called Kimbrough Woods. The, it was, it got out of the ground relatively quickly. The first couple of sections were developed under the name Kimbrough Woods. Then during the recession, it kind of floundered a little bit. The original developer is no longer associated with the development. A new developer picked up the development as we were coming out of the Great Recession and began developing as the Meadows at Kimbrough Woods. Well, after some experience developing the Meadows at Kimbrough Woods, he wanted to fine-tune the development a little bit more to his vision for the property, and so that's why we're before you tonight, to request an amendment to the existing Kimbrough Woods PRD to implement some changes and also some improvements to the plan. Also, the area that is colored orange on the map before you is an additional approximately nine acres that is being, that is proposed to be added to the PRD. It's currently zoned RS fifteen, but the developer of Kimbrough Woods has purchased the property and wishes to add it to the Kimbrough Woods PRD, and doing so, rezoning from RS fifteen to PRD. The original Kimbrough Woods PRD called for two hundred and eighty-three homes on seventy-four acres for a density of three point eight dwelling units per acre. The total number of dwelling units that are proposed now is three hundred and fourteen on the eighty-three acres, and the density will remain the same at three point eight dwelling units per acre. In the original plan book, there was no minimum lot size set. It just had the overall density, but the applicant is looking to set the minimum lot size at six thousand square feet. However, the current plan calls for the exterior material of the homes at sixty percent masonry. The applicant is looking to bump that up to a hundred percent masonry. Also, the existing plan makes provisions for a certain portion of the lots to be side-entry garages instead of front-entry garages, and the applicant is looking to eliminate the side-entry garages and make all the homes in the remaining sections front-entry garages, but he is looking to increase the front setback from twenty-five feet to thirty-five feet, which will enable four cars to park in the driveway. That thirty-five-foot front setback to the face of the garage door is usually what we like to see in order to get four cars in the driveway. So another improvement that he's making to the plan, the original Kimbrough Woods PRD does not make provisions for any type of amenities other than some green space. He is actually proposing an active amenity lot that will include picnic tables and a tot lot and some benches, so that the residents will have some usable active recreational space in the neighborhood. Also, another improvement is that the development will have more than one access to a main road outside the development. Right now, the development only has access to St. Andrews Drive. With the acquisition of the property on Veterans Parkway, that will allow the development to have access to Veterans Parkway as well, creating two major ways in and out of the The twenty thirty-five land use plan calls for the property to develop as auto-urban residential, and I'll pull up the, there we go, the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan future land use map. An auto-urban residential is up to eight and a half dwelling units per acre, and the minimum lot size of six thousand square feet is at about six dwelling units per acre, but this plan actually keeps the density of three point eight dwelling units per acre, which is on the low end of the auto-urban residential recommendation. So the proposed plan is consistent with the Murfreesboro twenty thirty-five land use plan. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this on August the second and unanimously recommended approval of the zoning request. Mr. Clyde Roundtree, in this instance, does have a PowerPoint presentation that he would like to give you on the proposed development, and I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Mayor McFarland, council members, city staff, my name is Clyde Roundtree of Huddleston Steel Engineering. Matthew did a really good job just kind of highlighting the key points to why the change was made for the amendment for the plan development. I'd like to say I'm accompanied here by Mr. Joe I'd like to say I'm accompanied here by Mr. Joey Smith, if you have any questions for the developer. But I'd like to go through a brief presentation, just hit the high points of the pattern book. In essence, as Matthew mentioned, there's an additional 8.9 acres that are being added, but that's going to provide us a secondary access point on the Veterans Boulevard, and that's a big, big plus in this development. There is additional homes, but as Matthew mentioned, the density is going to stay the same as was currently approved. Primarily, this was a result of a change in the floodplain area that constituted a lot more area being allocated for floodplain. So that basically catalyzed a lot of the movement in terms of the master plan. As Matthew mentioned, 6,000 square feet are the lot minimums. And the, removing the side-entry garages, when we get down to 6,000 square feet lot sizes, that was really forcing us to go ahead and make all the homes, front-entry homes. And then lastly, working with the city staff, trying to make sure that the development didn't feel like it really changed character as a result of smaller lot size, that's where the increase in masonry product came from, from 60% to 100%. But Mr. Smith was glad to do that and making sure that the quality stayed high within the development. Adjacent zoning, as you can see, it's a highly dense residential area currently. We're keeping up that same pattern throughout the new development as well. This just highlights the lot. Let's see here. It goes through this particular slide, and it just shows basically the adjacent subdivisions as well, and shows you how that relates to the new lot. And there, the bottom's key, that's Veterans Parkway there that's highlighted in red. So you'll see we have quite a bit of frontage that's going to be allowed to make the connection to Veterans Parkway. A key component that Mr. Smith thinks will be really a positive for the existing residences, upon the initial phase of construction, veterans will be the construction access. The neighbors were concerned that the current neighborhood would be the access point for the new construction. And so the new phase will be coming up from the south off of veterans, and that'll be Just some images, and as we mentioned, this is an extension of an existing subdivision, so there's a lot of vacant land, a lot of streets kind of stub out into this particular piece of property. So those slides will show you those components. And then the homes, same character of home, as we mentioned though, a larger percentage of masonry, so we feel like that'll hold the value of the existing homes that are in the neighborhood, as well as continue the same theme of quality. Basically, this is the original master plan, just the graphics showing that. And this is the new proposed master plan. The orange lots are really showing where the additional lots are going to be added. And then all the green shows you all the commitment to, on the right-hand side, on the eastern side, that's the floodplain area that's been added. And that's what kind of basically forced the whole subdivision to be kind of justified to the left there. And then that shows you where the blue dot is, that's where the connection's going to be made to Veterans Parkway. And D.R. Horton is the home builder, so they have a reputation as well for quality. And Mr. Smith, in the process of negotiating with the neighbors, the neighbors that were most vocal were the ones that were right along the adjacent property line where this park is shown. And those particular lots were a little narrower than some of the other lots, I mean, as far as depth-wise, they're a little shorter, less depth than the other lots in the neighborhood. And after hearing the concerns of the neighbors and looking at the lot sizes, Mr. Smith thought it'd be a great idea to go ahead and give that over as an amenity. And as Matthew mentioned, it is a play area for children, some picnic tables, some additional parking that'll be used in that area. But it also really provides us the ability to maintain that existing vegetation that is along that property line, and the neighbor was thrilled with that as a possibility. So with that in mind, that's a brief presentation, but kind of hits the high points. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and Mr. Smith's here as well, if you have any questions for the developer.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree.
I'm sorry, could you just answer one question? Where is the amenity area? I don't see that on the pattern book.
Let's go back to the master plan. If you can see that green space, it's kind of in between the two green spaces. The one on the right is the floodplain.
Oh, okay.
So it's right on the back portion of the property. But it butts the neighbor who was very vocal in the neighborhood meeting, his house is recessed very far back in that piece of property adjoining. So that park is literally right against the side of his house, so he's thrilled with that option.
We'll now need to conduct a public hearing for this rezoning request of the PRD. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Okay, seeing now, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 17OZ44 to rezone an area along Veterans Parkway to planned residential development PRD District, Kimbrough Woods PRD.
Move for approval.
Councilman Smotherman and Councilman Shacklet slash Wade, Ms. Wright will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 17RPH45 adopted by the City Council on August 17, 2017, will conduct a public hearing to consider adoption of planned services for an annexation of approximately nine acres along Cushing Avenue, which have been proposed to be annexed to the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Rutherford County Government applicant notices said public hearing was published in the September 11, 2017 issue of the local newspaper.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Subject property is located on the east side of Cushing Avenue. It's owned by Rutherford County Government and is directly across Cushing Avenue from the practice ball fields for Oakland Middle School. See Oakland Middle School right here on the map, and the ball fields are right here. And yesterday, at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, the Board of Zoning Appeals approved a special use permit request for some additions and kind of a reallocation of the uses on the Oakland Middle School property. And being that the county government owns this property that's in purple, some of those athletic fields are actually moving across Cushing Avenue to the property that's being requested for annexation. But the, due to space constraints, County School Board noticed a need to enlarge Oakland Middle School, add some building improvements, so some of those practice ball fields are getting displaced. The special use permit that was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals yesterday was for both sides of Cushing Avenue, both the area where the building additions are going, as well as the area that we're considering tonight for annexation. And because it is about to be developed with some additional ball fields, the county schools and county government have made a petition to the city for the annexation of that parcel. Parcel is surrounded on four out of its five sides by the city limits. It's accessed by Cushing Avenue, which is a city street. It's undeveloped, there are no structures on it that we would have to provide services to immediately, but we would be able to easily provide services to any future development on the subject property. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. And I would mention that Mr. Trey Lee from Rutherford County Schools is back here, and he's been very patient, waiting through all the public hearings, and he'll be happy to answer any questions regarding the schools' plans, school systems' plans for expansion at Oakland Middle. Thank you. Planning Commission did recommend approval unanimously.
All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing for the planned services for the annexation in approximately nine acres located along Cushing Avenue. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing now, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll consider a motion for the annexation in the planned services.
Separate motions, please. One for the planned services first, please.
Excuse me. We'll consider adoption of Resolution 17RPS45 for the planned services.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider for adoption Resolution 17RA-45, which would be for the annexation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ms. Palmly?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. We do have six public hearings to schedule, and they're all listed in the agenda, so I won't bother going over them. These six public hearings were considered by the Planning Commission at its September the 6th meeting. Much like the ones tonight, I think all six public hearings could be handled in one night, and we would recommend a public hearing date of November the 2nd.
November 2nd is the date that's been recommended.
Move, we have public hearings on November 2nd. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palmly. Consider recommendations of the Planning Commission for mandatory referrals. We have a right-of-way abandonment for White Poplar Court.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if it's okay with you, I'm going to address both of these items at one time.
Sure. All right, the second item is the drainage easement abandonment for White Poplar Court. Mr. Ives, well, we need a motion for each of these individually.
I would request separate motions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the August 2nd Planning Commission meeting, the Commission reviewed an application for both the right-of-way abandonment and a drainage easement abandonment along White Poplar Court. This is an existing cul-de-sac that will serve the recently approved Poplar Grove Residential Subdivision, which is planned as a 32-unit, single-family residential development on a single lot of record. If the right-of-way abandonment is approved by the City Council, maintenance of White Poplar Court, excuse me, would become the responsibility of the developer and subsequently the homeowners' association. The subject drainage easement is located at the eastern terminus of White Poplar Court and runs to the eastern property line. If the drainage easement abandonment is approved, the applicant will dedicate an equivalent drainage easement to the north of the existing easement. The Planning Commission voted to send both abandonment requests forward to the City Council with favorable recommendations, and as Mr. Ives noted, separate votes would be needed for the two abandonment requests. There are staff or Planning Commission imposed conditions that I want to go through quickly. If the right-of-way abandonment is approved, the following six conditions should apply. One, utility and drainage easements as needed must be retained prior to the abandonment of the right-of-way. Two, the applicants must provide a legal description, an exhibit, and any other legal documentation necessary for the preparation of the required legal documents. Three, all legal documents are subject to the approval of the city attorney. Four, the applicant will be responsible for recording the quitclaim deed. Five, the applicant shall prepare and submit to the city a long-term operation and maintenance plan and associated agreement for the White Poplar Court paver system prior to the finalization of the abandonment process. And six, the applicant shall prepare and submit to the city an agreement document for the developer and/or HOA to maintain the decorative pavement located in the right-of-way. With regard to the second item, which is the drainage easement abandonment, if you approve that, we ask that you impose the following conditions. One, the applicants must provide a legal description, an exhibit, and any other documentation necessary for the preparation of the required legal documents. Two, all legal documents are subject to the approval of the city attorney. And three, the applicant will be responsible for recording the quitclaim deed. Staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff? Okay, we'll need a motion for the right-of-way abandonment, abandonment, abandonment for White Poplar Court.
So moved for the right-of-way abandonment. Abandonment, abandonment.
We have a motion.
Could I ask a question after, because I was trying to get my head around what, you know, there were some drainage issues related to this, you know, we had people speak during our public hearing about what implications that might have on Maribella and some of the other developments over there. Are we giving up some kind of control over addressing any issues that might happen related to the drainage and the permeable pavers and the maintenance of, you know, keeping them clean and functional and up to their optimum performance and all this kind of stuff? When we give up right-of-way, do we, do they, are they still responsible for any issues that might occur?
Good evening, Councilman Shacklet. Sam Huddleston, City Engineering Department. Condition of the right-of-way abandonment, city giving up the ability to operate and maintain that as a public road, was conditioned on recording a stormwater maintenance agreement. That stormwater maintenance agreement obligates the new developer to properly operate and maintain that, those permeable pavers, the ability for the city to come back in and address that. If they fail to, is included in that maintenance agreement. That agreement gets recorded. It's a legal document that Mr. Ives prepared for several years ago. And so, first of all, we assign them the responsibility, and then secondly, if they do not fulfill that responsibility, the city has the ability to go in and pick that opportunity up for them and then bill them back for it.
And that first line of what your concerns were related to the any drainage easements contained in the final plat for Poplar, Tulip Poplar subdivision, could you explain that? I'm not sure why.
I'm not, I don't have that particular language in front of me.
It says, "Any drainage easements contained on the final plat for Tulip Poplar subdivision also need to be abandoned."
Well, there was a small drainage easement that was included, that was a subject of the second motion, or the second item here. It was a small drainage easement at the end of White Poplar Court that the revised development plan needs to do away with, and so they're going to take away one drainage easement and then provide a second drainage easement that would be comparable to that. And if you'd look at the map, I can show you where that is, if we get that up on the So in this area right here, there's an existing drainage easement that was recorded that served the very end of White Poplar Court. Because of their development plan, they were actually going to create some different areas in there, so that drainage easement needs to go away, and there'd be a second easement that would be provided that would serve the same function on the revised development plan.
I got you. Okay.
Did we have, we've got a motion?
We have a motion. We have a second. Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now need a motion for the drainage easement abandonment for White Poplar Court.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you. We'll now consider recommendations of the Assistant Human Resources Director regarding health insurance premium rates.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As an item for the agenda, it's requested that City Council adjust the budgeted health insurance premiums from 3% to 1.5%. This will result in an employee monthly premium increase ranging from $1.27 for the employee-only HRA plan to $5.71 for the employee family PPO plan. The original 3% increase rates at $2.54 and $11.42 respectfully. Council previously approved the rate pass for Medicare supplemental and the retiree HRA plans, and we're recommending no changes there. You'll recall during the health insurance workshop, we discussed health insurance coverage being on a calendar year, but the city's budget being on a fiscal year because of the difference long-range forecastings required. At council's request, our benefits consultants reviewed an additional five months of actual claims data, and they concluded that the city's budgeted medical premiums increases for 2018 should be at the 1.5%. I'd like to point out that employee premiums have not increased since 2015. At that time, we saw a 12.2% increase, which was primarily based on claims experience for the previous two years. The financial impact- The financial impact would be approximately $15 million, $700,000. That represents approximately $225,500 in savings or actually an adjustment to the original budgeted amount. The interim HR Director, City Manager, and Finance Director concur with the 1.5% increase. The new rates would be effective January 1, 2018, with employee deductions beginning in January. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
The employee deductions would begin in December, correct?
They would. They begin in December for January. We take them one month in advance.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion second. Council, Vice Mayor Skels Harris and Councilman Shacklet. Ms. Rattrick will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, now consider, consider recommendations of the, I guess it'd be Water Resources Director?
Sir.
Okay, the Water Resources Director regarding the Middle Tennessee State University, MTSU bid award to paint logo on the Bloomfield repurified tank.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to come for you tonight. I know Georgia will be happy that the record has been straightened out, that we are now the Murfreesboro Water Resources Department. So thank you very much. On August 10th, we received one bid to paint the MTSU logo on our repurified tank over by Bloomfield Links. This, we had entered into a, an agreement in May with MTSU that afforded them the ability to do this. They did only have budgeted $33,000. The tank bid came in at $38,874. We did receive a letter Friday that said that they were, they had found the additional funds and had approved the project. So I'm here before you today to ask for your approval, even though there are no funds to be expended by the city. This would have typically maybe been a consent agenda item, but this is a seminal moment, I believe, in our water tank future. So I'd ask for your approval.
Do we have a timeframe when it's going to be done?
Yes, sir. It's, we're really at the very last minute, honestly. We have to get this project started by mid-October so that we can be done by the end of November. The tank has to be lowered so that there's no condensation on the outside of the tank as the letter being painted. Couldn't do it through the summer because we had such a high demand for our repurified water for irrigation. So we can do it, we can lower the tank and still, I think, meet our irrigation demands in October and November.
So moved.
Councilman LaLance, yes, sir.
No, I was just going to make the motion, but.
Second.
No, no, not for that.
Oh.
But you just kept talking and I was like, all right, I just wanted, I'm just kidding.
Pardon me.
Messing with you.
Now, hey, so we have a motion and a second. Darren, this has been something that started back almost a year ago, I think, and Darren's worked through getting this, this done. MTSU found some funds in a trust account that they were given 20 years ago and.
For special advertising purposes or something to that effect.
So we're, this is a, this will be a, a cool deal. So we have a motion and a second. Ms. Rattrick will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Darren. Thank you for your hard work. Consider for adoption Resolution 17R 25 requesting unclaimed balance of accounts remitted to the state treasurer under Unclaimed Property Act 2014, 2015, and 2016 reporting years. Ms. Wright.
This is required for us to reclaim the funds we've sent to the state. We'll keep those funds in safekeeping here. If someone has funds that they can claim, we will refund it from our resources. But we do have to do this by resolution and send a copy of such to the state.
A move for approval.
Second. Motion second. Ms. Rattrick will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we'll now consider for adoption Resolution 17R 26, expressing official intent that certain expenditures to be incurred in a connection with certain public works projects and related expenditures to acquire approximately 11.7 acres of property along East Clark Boulevard be reimbursed from proceeds of notes, bonds, and other indebtedness to be issued or incurred by the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
Mayor, this is a refunding resolution for the property on Highland and Clark that we talked about recently, the wetland property adjacent to Oakland. So we'd recommend your approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Rattrick will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. I have one recommendation for a pension committee approval. Mr. Scott Usleton, he's replacing Denny O'Donnell, who Denny's served for many years.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Rattrick will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have one sort of looksee for Stephen Shirley had to resign from the Parks and Recreation Commission. He had taken a, a job that would not allow him to be at the noon meetings, so recommending Charlie a pejin to you to fill his spot. So we'll do that at the next meeting. Do we have any beer permits?
Yes, we do. We have a special event permit for the Darryl Worley Foundation. The event location is at Bumpus Harley-Davidson on October 11th. That application is in order. The regular permit applications for on-premise, we have a restaurant at 1911A Medical Center Parkway. The background check is in order. They do need to finish their building codes inspections before we could issue that permit. Additionally, we have a grocery market at 2975 South Rutherford Boulevard that has an ownership change. The background information there is in order. They too need to finish their building codes, building codes inspections. And finally, we have a restaurant at 1440 Medical Center Parkway, Suite C. That background inspection is in order. They need to finish up their building codes inspections, too. We would issue all of those three upon approval, once they've completed their application, by completing their building codes inspections. The special event permit, if you approve it tonight, we'll issue it tomorrow. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions.
So moved.
Motion second. A second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. I think we have one statement that needs to be paid.
I think this is our final payment on the steam engine restoration and move for approval.
Second. Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.